For the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible.
Lord, we ask that you protect us and our sinners. We ask that you give us a helping hand as we serve others. Bestow upon us your grace to make sound and good decisions. Amen.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Stahasky?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Sherman?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodward?
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Item one.
Resubmit memo dated October 16th from PPW Commissioner Raymond Graham to City Clerk. He advised the clerk of expenditures, city funds, trash removal on 420 Seneca Street, Shawn H. Kimball, and 56 North Fourth, Alpha Kaza Jr.
Hall out for that, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, City Chamberlain, transfer $4,600 from the elections account as follows: $845 into the Fire Department Point Two, $144 Fire Department Point Four, Five, Seven, $28 in the Fire Department, $4,000, $3,083 into the Building Point Two, and $500 in the Building Point Four, Zero, Zero, Eight, for a total of $4,600.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Rose Chemist, 86 Ridge Road, to Fulton Library, effective immediately and expired December 31st, 2000, to fill the unexpired term of Monafentecia was hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the reappointment of Mayor Stafford of Susan Farini, Town Nestle Avenue, to the Board of Assessment and Review, effective October 1st, to expire September 30th, 2003, is hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Notation that the appointment of Mayor, by Mayor Stafford of Richard Chemist, 86 Ridge Road, to the Lake Niamon, Nant, Wanta Development Commission, effective immediately and expired December 31st, 2003, is entered into the minutes of this council meeting of November 4th as mail or record.
Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized and directed to sign change order number one between the City of Fulton and Blaisenblauken Lee for engineering services in connection with Project 076.72, number one, to install a chlorine procedural-based feed control system at sewage treatment plant, set engineering services at a cost of $10,000 is hereby approved.
I'll second it.
What, in a nutshell, what's this for?
This is for engineering to, uh... take care of a problem that the DEC brought to our attention, in that the chlorine, uh... at the wastewater treatment plant was not at a steady level. It was up and down, and was going out of the parameters that they, uh...accept. So, we need to do this, and this, uh...they will come up with a plan, and then we will have to implement the, uh...the equipment down there to take care of this problem.
They have an estimated cost to fix? I mean, if it's $10,000 to figure out how we're gonna fix it, you know? How much is it gonna cost to fix it?
We don't know.
Yeah. They'll come up with that, Harley.
Sure they will.
Yeah, what they did was, uh...right now, they add the chlorine, but it's not based on flow. You know what I mean? Sometimes the flow doubles or goes down, and sometimes they don't get enough, and sometimes they get too little, 'cause they only run the plant eight hours a day. So, they want some type of automatic measuring device in there that puts it in according to the demand.
We, uh...we met with the DEC on this, and we worked out this agreement that it's an order.
Yeah, we got it wrote up for it.
By that, where we are required to do this.
Yep. I seen it right up on it.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I have for that, Your Honor.
Second?
We have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved that the clerks' report for July, in the amount of $6,191.99 August, the amount of $11,130.58 September, the amount of $10,074.30 are hereby, are received, approved, and placed on file.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign a one-year agreement between City of Fulton and Swoogle County Opportunities, effective January 1st, 1999 through December 31st, 1999, for the use of the community room for the senior nutrition program.
This is something that has been done for a number of years.
Correct.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Resolved the following claims are referred to our city attorney, letter of claim submitted by Mr. Scott Bennett, petition for review, PNC Food Market, letter of claim Mr. and Mrs. Salvatore Banano, letter of claim James Donegan, letter of claim City Fulton Sewage Treatment Plant, letter of claim Lauren Preston, letter of claim Francis Segretto, letter of claim Richard Tietro, letter of dangerous condition Nina Pantello, letter of claim Cory Jacobson, letter of claims Mr. and Mrs. David June, George Levey, Robert Gallimore for Karen Driscoll on behalf of Heather Smith, Philip and Lisa Cray, M. Goldberg's son, Richard Bartlett, Agnes Hans, Marion Davis, Honey Halsted, Donald Bullard, James and Kelly Steltinger, Mr. and Mrs. Dustin Whacker, Harlan Collins, Dave Niotti, Annette Cotton, Amos Ives, Artemis Parrish, and Rob, Robin Davis.
Are most of these from the flooding?
Yep.
I would imagine some of them would be.
I recognize some of the names.
Couple of them are tax cases, but most of them are from the flood.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Apparently it's working not well.
A bond resolution authorizing the issuance of 500,000 serial bonds with City of Fulton to pay the city's share of the cost of the reap construction of certain roads in and for said city.
This is just secondary with, it's already been approved. This is for the downtown project. The money was approved before, no, this is just the bond resolution. It is not additional money. Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Got that?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Whereas it means the council held on October 6th, public hearing was held regarding proposed local law entitled nuisance abatement ordinance. Whereas after the close of the public hearing, the common council decided to reconsider the local law and authorize clerk to advertise for a second public hearing at this meeting of November 4th. Mayor Stafford will declare the public hearing open.
But prior to the public hearing, does the Legislative Committee, uh...want to make a statement on what, uh...alterations have been made to the original, uh...ordinance?
Well, we, uh...we did meet, and we looked at the, looked at it, and what we had decided to do was we were gonna remove the, uh...the articles that referred to garbage and the property conservation code.
We also made all the other changes, too.
Yeah, and there were a number of other, uh...Dave, would you wanna go over the, the other changes that we were gonna?
This would be, um...looking at the one that was made available last Thursday or Friday to people, which was the latest revision. After that, the Legislative Committee met and made some changes or recommended some changes, and I guess the best way to do it is to go through it, because, uh...page by page. Uh...the first page, the whereas clauses, there were, um...the first two, there is mention of property conservation code violations. Those would be stricken. You didn't hear what I just said? The Legislative Committee met Monday and reviewed the, uh...proposed, the newest revision of the proposed law, which was made available Friday, which you say you have, and made some recommended changes. That's what I'm going over now. So, there are changes to what you have. Because it was only Monday, obviously, this wasn't changed, and it wasn't made available to people beforehand, because what you got Friday or Thursday was for this hearing. So, again, the first page, it'd be striking the references to property conservation code violations in the first two, two count, or two paragraphs. On the third page, in A2, where it says predicted, that should be predicated, and that was simply a typographical error.
Was that page three?
The third page. On the fourth page, under sub-paragraph A, designated nuisance offenses, it would be crossing out, uh...near the end of that, section, section C70, collection and disposal of garbage, refuse, and recyclables. That would be crossed out, and also chapter 120, property conservation, would be crossed In the next page, uh...subsection 24, the words "hearing officer" were left in from a prior draft. The first word, "hearing officer," should be changed to the word "court." Excuse me. And the second word, "hearing officer," should be changed to the word "chief." And in, uh...the next paragraph, paragraph five, the third line, the word "premises" should be taken out. That was a typographical error that did not make grammatical sense being in there.
They were at the city clerk's on Friday, right, Joe? Only one person picked it up, and that was Ryan Patrick.
Uh...more downstairs, yes.
Okay. Well, the thing is, though, the copies, they're still inadequate. Yeah, because I'm making all these changes.
Right.
But it would be nice if they had them, yeah, because it's still...
I talked with the person who works in City Hall Monday, and he said he still hadn't turned them out, and this is Wednesday, so...
Who did you talk to, sir?
I talked to Bruce.
They had them? I handed them to Bruce Thursday at 5:00.
Tell me this stuff about Monday. I, I don't know. See? And then if you're up here and you're not a copy, we can't give you nothing.
Mike, there's confusion, 'cause what was given to him Thursday, which should've been given to you, had, was changed, and these changes I'm going over now, but he still should have, you still should have had that other copy beforehand.
There's a lot of he said, she said, all those goes in government. Yeah, he's gonna get copies now, but we should've had them Thursday or Friday.
I haven't gotten one either.
Well, that's what I wanna know, and I can't make a decision leading here in five minutes in front of you people that's been studying this.
You don't have to make it.
For two weeks. Sir, I'm not talking, you are talking to common council, and if you don't like what I'm saying, bring it up in front of the board, but don't get me. Well, I want point of order, and I don't want this guy to...
I understand this, and we're gonna get you a copy of it now.
But I'm saying...
It was available in the city clerk's office as of Friday. That's when these packages were put together for the council members. It was down there. If Mr. Thorpe told you it wasn't, he was in error.
This page, 'cause I left those words when I changed it. Having the judge do it, I left some of the words, "hearing officer," the first one should be "court."
Did he vote? Did he vote?
Did he cross off the premises?
Well, the problem is, yeah, since we advertised here, it's too late to cancel it, so we're gonna have to...
You got people here who could actually...
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask a question.
You got a hall full of people here.
We got a next mayor. We got people, and these copies are just coming out. Must be I'm not the only one in error.
Oh, we got somebody.
I didn't get them. Who's in error?
As I said, the copies were in the city clerk's office. Mr. Thorpe in the city clerk's office said they weren't there. He is in error, and I apologize for that. But they were down there. The city clerk just went down and picked them up. They've been down there for people to pick up. So, I'm sorry if there was a problem with communication in the city clerk's office. Jerry?
Mayor, I think, I think the confusion is that what Joe just handed out was the one that was available Friday.
Yes.
But I think what the confusion is, is what Dave is reading are changes that were made since this one was out. Is that correct?
Yes. Let me clarify that further, Jerry. We knew that making the new one available or revising this Tuesday morning on a word processor, having it ready, number one, would confuse a lot of people if they'd already picked it up, 'cause I figured most people that were interested had, and number two, would create some, uh...we know that we're gonna have to have a further, further hearing, because these changes are significant, and they should not, you know, they should not be able to be moved on tonight as changed. But they were in direct response to a lot of the concerns that were raised at the last hearing, and rather than say, Monday night, when we met, decided that we, these changes needed to be made, rather than say, "Well, let's cancel the hearing," we knew people were already planning, planning on coming, and public input is certainly the most important thing, one of the most important things we can do to make decisions here. We felt we should just leave it on and hear what people had to say. The only other change, I think, was in 63 dash A, at the very end, taking out the period and adding the words, uh...to the parties identified in section 63 dash 5, sub-paragraph 1, period, and then a new sentence that says, "A copy of said order will also be filed with the city clerk and made available for public inspection." And I believe that was it. Guys, Harley, just...
I'll add.
And the, with the revisions I just went through, and if there are any others that are decided on tonight, they will all be incorporated into the new, a further revised version that will be made available before the next hearing.
Right. Definitely. Unbelievable.
We got so far, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just have a couple of questions, I guess, clarifications. Does this pertain to every property in the city?
Yes.
Okay. Is an arrest for violation, a strike, a nuisance, or is it a conviction?
Conviction.
Okay, so it's three convictions for the same offense?
For any of the various offenses that are named.
So, it could be three different convictions within two years?
Yes.
Of the same person?
Such as a larceny, a robbery, uh...
Okay.
A murder.
So, if somebody, uh...wraps somebody's house, that's, that's a nuisance, right?
Yep.
And if they rent from...
No.
Somebody else?
That's not...
That's for the victim.
Oh, no.
You're not talking for the victim, but...
No, okay.
And not for the perpetrator, either.
Bob rents from me and raps Ed's house.
This is bad. No, this is...
Say, use another example.
And he's convicted of raping that house. Now, is that a strike?
No.
Well, then, what's the larceny of driving the house he lives in?
Because you know, as well as we do, what we're trying to talk here about nuisances. How is it a nuisance if I'm, if, if he's the victim? It's not his fault.
Bob's not the victim.
Whoever the victim is, it's not, you know, if it happens...
No, he raps Ed's house, but he rents from me.
That's not a strike against you, no. It only pertains to things that happen at that particular property.
Well, then, a larceny would never pertain to it.
Probably not.
A murder, a homicide would never pertain to it.
Yeah.
All right, if he killed somebody in my apartment...
It's getting worse.
Does he have to be the tenant of the apartment to do the killing in the apartment?
I don't know. That's, that's easy, yeah.
And does he have to do it three times? Because he can, can he rap him, rape him, and kill him? That's three offenses all at once, in the same apartment. Does that mean it closes the apartment up for a year or what? 'Cause I know if somebody's arrested for something, that's not grounds to evict them.
Well, they gotta be convicted according to this.
Even if they're convicted, we can't evict them.
No, we can't if they pass us.
The landlord can't either?
Is that what I'm saying?
No. So, how do you want the nuisance abated? In order to want these people kicked out of town, and you're expecting the landlord to do it, though?
That's what we're looking at. If you have a lease, can you, you go to the lease?
Oh, sure. I brought copies of our lease today.
Well, if they, if they violate the lease, then they can be evicted?
There is such a law as objectionable...
Thank you.
I highlighted the second page of that for yous. There's such a law, a tennis law, objectionable tennis. We can talk to any judge, I've talked to our city judge, I've talked to a former city judge. It's one of the hardest things in the world to ever have a divorce. You've talked to any attorney, you'll find out, you're not gonna get them out. Just because they have loud noise, they paint their rent on the first, they paint their water on the first, they don't destroy the place, and they get arrested for disorderly conduct, larceny, or anything else, that is not grounds for removing them from their premises. I mean, if you look at the second page of our lease, I highlight it. I've always had this in there.
Option four.
And it's, it's in black and white, everything that's in there, Allah, and still, it's a very, very hard thing. If they only pay bucks, you can kick them out. If they don't owe you any money, it's very difficult, and you're trying to put this burden on other people in this city, when the laws are, the laws of the land, you know, federal laws, state laws, county laws, city law. If they break the law, they're arrested, if they're convicted, the judge imposes the sentence, and the sentence is not, and never has been, you must leave your house.
But does that...
If this pertains to every house...
Does that take care of the nuisance? That's what we're asking.
Well, they'll put them in jail, but it won't take, kick them out of the house.
But see, what this is, what this is trying to do is eliminate the nuisance. It's not the one, the one time that it happens.
No, three times. Say the guy's...
It's, it's the repeat offenders.
No, no, I, I understand what you mean, three times in two years. I understand that. But if somebody's arrested for the same thing three times, if he's arrested for possession of marijuana, if it's a small amount, it's just a misdemeanor, right?
Could be a violation.
Or, okay, it's a violation. You say you're gonna close up the house if you don't remedy the situation. The courts will not empower us to evict someone because they were arrested three times in two years for possession of marijuana.
I disagree with you.
You have to swallow illegal activity in your, your apartments?
No, we have other ways, but...
Ryan, Ryan, your lease says...
Oh, yeah.
In accordance with all local, county, state, and federal laws and regulations, if I bring, if I'm, if I'm you, and I bring a tenant in who's been convicted of, of a drug possession or sale out of one of your residences, no judge is gonna say no. I disagree with you.
Okay. Well, I hope you're right.
Have you ever tried that?
I haven't had it. Uh...my other question is, what if it's a business downstairs, and the apartment's upstairs, and this happens? And the way this is written, you're gonna have to close up the business that's downstairs, too. Now, that's really gonna be detrimental to the city.
That's not how I read it, to be honest with you. If you've got an apartment upstairs of your business, look at, well, I won't name names.
The landlord has to relocate all the other tenants in the building at his expense if he closes it up.
Says you have to abate the nuisance. If your tenant upstairs is the nuisance who is doing one of these things, and you kick him out, I can't see how we're gonna shut down your business.
If you can't, if you go to court and you can't get them out, because his rent's paid away.
Well, according to our attorney, he says that we can get them out.
It's a minor thing, if it's just a possession of something. If, if, you know, I can say it might, the judge isn't gonna let you kick them out if they pay other things.
Well, our attorney says he will. He just said that to you just now.
Okay, if, if, all right, but he says he will. But if the judge says no, then you're gonna close up the businesses downstairs and to get the tenants out. But still, if the judge won't kick the tenants out, you're gonna close the building so they have to move. The landlord's gonna have to pay to move to the people that were convicted of something?
It would sue you.
Besides all the other times?
The city will not incur the expense of doing this.
Well, I understand that. I see you got that written in there. Now, the other thing you got, a lack of knowledge is not a defense.
Can I, can I just go back to that prior issue?
Okay.
Two, two, two points, Ryan. One, is premises is defined as building pla, place, or real property, where on the nuisance is being conducted. So, if I'm prosecuting this, in my mind, place, if you have a multifamily, or if you have a business in one part of an apartment, place is the actual apartment where it occurred. So, I'm not gonna try to shut down an entire building just because one tenant or one resident of a multifamily or whatever is a nuisance.
Okay. What does that mean then, relocating the other?
Well, let me just answer one other thing. If you are working to try to get somebody out, and we're trying to shut a place down because the person's a nuisance, and you come here and the judge says no, that certainly is gonna go a long ways towards what we decide to do, I mean, 'cause we, you know, we're all, the intent is to work with. Um...I don't know if we go so far as to put something law that says that if that was the case, we couldn't do this, but certainly we'd be hard pressed to do it if, if a judge says you can't get the people out for the reasons that we're trying to shut you down.
I think it'd be very difficult for a judge to, have you come in front of a judge saying, "I need this tenant out of there because he's violating these laws, and otherwise you're gonna shut me down," and then have the judge say, "No, we're not letting them out of there," and then turn around and shut down the whole building? That, to me, I don't think that same judge is gonna make a decision like that. It's not right.
It's irrational.
Well, he'll have to make that decision. He'll have to make a decision whether law is constitutional in the state of New York or the United States of America.
Well, you, I'm just answering, I'm just answering the hypothetical that you're giving me.
He's not gonna remove them.
I'm just, I'm just answering the hypothetical that you're giving, giving the council. It doesn't make sense. It, it's not a rational decision by a judge.
I've seen laws...
To keep, uh...keep a tenant that you know and that he knows is in violation of these laws, to make you keep that tenant in the building, and then turn around and have the same judge say, "Well, okay, we're gonna vacate the entire building, 'cause that guy won't get that guy out of there." It doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, the judge has to say you can vacate the building.
It's gotta go, it's gotta go to, it goes to the judge.
Okay, the judge is the one that decides whether the building is closed. Okay. Next point, lack of knowledge is not a defense. If lack of knowledge is not a defense, then it should be written in here that every property owner in this city is notified by cer, certified mail of every single conviction of anybody in this city to the place of residence. Why wait until after the third conviction, and then all of a sudden you have 30 days to remove somebody, nip it in the bud, notify them on the first conviction? But that has to be... But that has to be notified, every place in this city. If it's Bob's son, Bob's got to be notified that his son's convicted of something.
I've got three daughters.
But I think that's important. You're saying lack of knowledge is not a defense, but you're not telling us anything until it's too late, until after the third offense. And then you have 30 days to ask for a hearing or somehow abate the nuisance. And if you want to serve someone with a 30-day notice, if their lease is up, you can serve them a 30-day notice of tenancy. After that 30 days, if they don't leave, you still have to go to court again. Take them to court because they didn't obey the 30-day. You can't do the 30. But if you're going to have, you have three strikes and you're out, then whoever the property owner is, the place of residence, if the person was convicted, must be notified every time there's a conviction, including the first conviction. And the police will not tell us anything about anybody without filing the Freedom of Information Act. So you'd have to write that in here that the police have to notify.
To be honest with you, Ron, landlords I talk to, if there's a problem property, they do nip it in the bud just after a phone call. I think you'd be hard pressed after somebody gets to the point to be bad enough to fall under this law, hard pressed to find a landlord who didn't know about it.
Well, what if they didn't know, I mean...
That's a big what-if.
Is disorderly conduct one of the nuisances?
Yes.
Okay, so it could be domestic dispute, outdoors yelling, disorder of charge. Landlords might never hear about it. Never.
Well, if it happens more than a few times, it's been my experience so far that they do.
He should know the first time it happens. He should know the first time it happens. If there's a conviction of it, the landlord should be notified.
I'll tell you right now, I have personal experience with this. I have a place next to me. There is a fistfight going on. This is a routine thing with this place. Fistfight going on in the front yard. I called the landlord. I says, you know, you got a fight going on in the front yard right now. Well, what do you want me to do about it? I says, why don't you go over there and throw somebody out of there, you know? Oh, no, that's not, no, they need a place to live. Next thing I know, one of them's face down in a mud puddle, the other one's stomping on the guy, and then now there's three cop cars out in front of there. While I'm on the phone with her, I says, now you got three cop cars in front of you. Well, I, you know, maybe they'll do something. I don't care, they need a place to live. This is the answer that we're getting from some of these landlords.
Well, that's too bad, but you can't take away the rights of individuals.
It's not just too bad, that's what we're trying to fix.
But you can't take away the rights of individuals because those few, I mean, this is a free...
Well, not all individuals get arrested and convicted three times in 24 months.
Do those people get convicted of anything, the fight?
Actually, the one individual was convicted of several things across the span of time.
Was he put in jail?
Yes, he did spend time in jail. No, I don't know. He's living somewhere in Fulton now, I know that, but...
See, the court system works, though, doesn't it? The laws we have...
He's living next door to somebody else. I don't know who, but I know he's there.
Where do you think these people are going to go? They're not going to, if they don't want to leave the city, where do you think they're going to go? They're going to my apartment and move into Ed's apartment.
Not if you guys, not if?
Not if?
Ed's the one moving.
You're going to pick on me now?
Yeah, but if you do your work... I think you adequately screen your tenants, they won't. Because part of this says that this is going to be on file at the city clerk's office.
Yeah, if you do your work as a landlord.
To get some compliance with this. Either people are going to start living like human beings, or they're going to find that it's not good to live in the city of Fulton, and they're going to move someplace else. That's what we're trying to do. We don't want them to move from place to place. Look, I worked with the criminal justice system for 24 and a half years, and I'll tell you, sometimes it's a criminal injustice system. You can't expect it to take care of these problems.
What you expect a property owner to take care of the problems? That the courts and the laws can?
I'm just saying that the landlords have to be more selective who they went to. That's what we've said right along.
I agree with you.
See, one thing, this law is also going to provide information for a landlord. If, you know, a landlord could file Freedom of Information Act on this, who's been in violation of this, and they can get those names. Yeah, but as a businessman, you would think you'd want to. I would. I'm a landlord, okay? And I'll tell you right now, I would use it.
If you're going to put this into law, then every conviction should be, a letter should be sent to whoever owns that property, that this person was just convicted of this crime. If you want to nip it in the bud. To wait, to have, lack of knowledge is not a defense, and then not inform us. Then, I mean, that's not as fair.
Well, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, but if that guy moves to a new place, he starts all over again, right, or wrong?
Right.
So it doesn't matter. If he's in your place and does three crimes in two years and moves out across the street, he starts all over again. She really hasn't got any...
What has happened, though, is that that landlord property that he's moved into, the new property he's moved into, the new landlord hasn't done his job. He's gone ahead and allowed this guy, he doesn't care who he rents to, he turns around and rents to this guy who's already violated, already been in violation of this law someplace else. The new landlord says, I don't care, just give me the money. I just want the rent. Unless they move in there, next thing you know, the guy's doing the same thing to him. Well, now we're coming after that landlord because he didn't do his job. And finding out if he's violated this law is a very simple process. You come down here, if you were in violation of this law, I'm not going to rent to you, sorry. Next.
Mayor, can you file a free review motion with the police department for anybody you want? For all costs?
No, you have to have cause.
My only cause is I want to rent my apartment. Can I get on and file a free review motion if he's ever been arrested?
What you can do is, as part of your lease agreement, have them sign a release allowing you to ask about their criminal record. You can do that. If they do that and they sign that, then you can bring that to the police department, and they can answer those questions.
Yeah, you do that in the application process, yeah.
Is loud noise a nuisance?
If it is disorderly conduct.
I still honestly feel that we should be made aware, and there's a big issue, not after the third one, after the first one.
You're saying that if somebody's done it in your property, you, as a landlord, should be informed about that?
The property owner.
Yeah, that may not, that may not be a bad idea, actually.
We're not talking about just apartments, we're talking about every piece of property in this city.
I wouldn't, I really wouldn't have a problem with it if, say, you've got Joe Blow in your place there, and he's causing problems, and now because of that guy, you've got a particular problem with whatever property on, whatever it is, that we would notify you that, you know, this individual living at this property is, we've already nailed him once, he's been convicted, you might want to consider getting him out of there.
That's what, that's definitely what I would want to know. I'd want to know the first time, not after the third time. And let's say you've got 30 days to resign.
I really, personally, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know how we can get it in there if that's, if that's a...
Yes. If you had the cops go over to one of your apartments, and you find out about it, what are you doing, anything?
It depends what it's for. If it's domestic dispute, you know...
Yeah, but I don't think you would put up with it, would you? Having the cops there?
Normally, no.
Because I got a apartment house next to me, right? The cops are there at least three, four times a week.
Do they ever arrest anybody?
Huh?
Do they ever arrest anybody?
I don't know, Ronnie. If they do or not, but...
Does the landlord know?
You know what he said? Same thing he just said. We've called him. He says, call the cops. He lives way out in Sterling.
Ronnie, don't even get a call back.
Yeah, that's the way they want to run their business.
And that's really what we've been talking about from day one, and that is, most of the landlords are good landlords. There are only a handful who don't care and don't feel any responsibility to the neighbors surrounding their property.
But before you pass the law, pass one that's going to work.
We hope it will.
I mean, that's going to work.
That's, that's why we're trying to have these public hearings, to get the input, to produce a law that will work and will be fair. That's what, we're looking for this input.
You're putting quite a burden on a person to evict on very tough grounds of eviction. I mean, we have leases and they're ironclad, and they're signed leases for a period of term. They're paying that rent, and they're not destroying the apartment. They're paying the water bill. It'd be very hard, very hard to go in front of the judge, say, I want these people out because they won't turn that radio off. Even if it's in the lease. Objectionable tenants is the hardest thing in the world to try to get an eviction.
I don't know.
If you're trying to get eviction out, and if you're working for the city of eviction, they don't, the city don't allow it. You're trying, you think the judge is going to say, sorry, I can't do that? I don't buy it.
Even the, no, I'm just on the first conviction, you know? You don't want to wait for the second one. And you're going to have, make it, I don't know, the judge probably won't work with you because he's judicial legislator. But you, if you're going to make something, make it ironclad so you know it's going to work up there. Because if it doesn't work up there, this is often not. The first case that goes up...
I agree with you. That's why we're trying to take the time to go through this and get something that's workable.
Well, you know, we tried to cover a lot of bases with this, okay? And then you get some, well, you're picking on me, or you're picking on me, or you're picking on this guy over here. So then you have to trim it back a little bit. Now, you get, well, is it going to work? Well, until we get it out there, we don't know. We really, like any law, how are you going to know until it's out there, you can try to enforce the thing? If it doesn't work, then we just, it's a useless law. We've got to get rid of it, you know, as far as I'm concerned.
A person's convicted three times, if anything, whatever it is, all right? Then the chief of police serves you a 30-day notice to abate the nuisance. The nuisance is what? Is a human being, right? That's what he's talking about? The nuisance is a person. To abate that nuisance, you have 30 days. That's why, if you're going to do something like this, we got to ham it on the first conviction. We can't wait till the third. Because then you've only got 30 days. And then it's some kind of $500 fine for something, and then it's, whatever the court costs, five charges for his lawyer fees.
Too much.
Question I got with Ron, too, is...
Bob sounds like a problem tenant.
Please, one other time.
The common council wants to pass a resolution like this. Like Ron says, you go in front of the judge. Would you put it in writing that the city common council will back you 100% because this is one law you want to go through? So would you put this in writing so you can take it to the city attorney? Or whoever you got to take it to? The common council, would you put all your handwriting on this law, saying that we back this 100%? You pass the thing, and then tell us go to the judge?
If the general counsel passes this ordinance, if they pass this ordinance, they will have voted for it, and that means they will put their name to it.
Thank you, Ron.
Here's Trobridge.
Just a simple question, Kathy Trobridge, Fifth Ward. Dave, is it legal to ask a judge to review a law or a proposed law? I think what, I don't think there's anything in this law we want to get rid of the druggies, the bad landlords. I've been in your guys' position, it's probably the most frustrating thing. Love to pied piper them out of Fulton. But I just wondered if it would be the smartest thing to make sure the judge would be able to review it and say, I couldn't do this. Ron brings up a point that many landlords that we talked to say, and I never knew if they were lying or what. I can't get them out. It's too expensive. I'd go to court. They could be lying, but I know that's the excuse. And this objectionable tenants law, if they have gone before a judge before, and the judge hasn't granted them the eviction, I think that's when maybe they could get frustrated and say, why bother?
I think there's a big difference between I can't get them out and I don't want to get them out.
Oh, I agree with that.
Because, like I said, the people that I've, the good landlords I've talked to, one phone call, even if people aren't convicted of anything, I've called people before and said, look, you're going to have a problem because these people moved in the first of the month. Today's the fifth, and I've already gotten five phone calls. And end of the month, they're gone, just like that. But that's perfect.
You're right. I've been there, and most of it is a phone call. We have, mostly, we have good landlords. I could probably name on my hand all the slum lords in the city. And it's over and over, it's in every single ward. And specifically, because we're targeting them, it seems to make sense that if a judge would just look and give his opinion. Because what these landlords should know is when we do take them, and they do violate this law, and we take them in front of you, it's not a waste of time. I think this judge has been respectful of cleaning up our neighborhoods and doing what we've asked. As long as he says this isn't unconstitutional, and we can abide by this, then any landlord that uses that excuse, that's certainly a lie and an excuse. And we should get them out of this town, and we should start posting slumlord signs. I was always for that. Put their name on there, their family's name, call them, do whatever you have to do.
Well, I would hope that this turns out to be a waste of time because they come into court and say, Judge, I'm already getting rid of the guy. That would be the best-case scenario.
And that would be wonderful, but like you said, you know, there's those cases where people are so stubborn that it would just be nice for a judge to put a stamp of approval and say that we can get them out because...
We're just looking for cooperation.
Sure.
We're really looking to hit over the head these guys that don't care.
Well, I agree. I fully understand the alderman's position.
I want to answer a question. Prior draft of this, I sent out to many local attorneys for comment. I asked if they felt comfortable, or if they didn't feel they wanted to take time to write it, I would take oral comments. And Mr. Oster is actually the only one who responded at that time. I did send a copy to Judge Luddington, and I spoke to him afterwards. And it's kind of like Ron was talking about, the difference between legislative and judicial branch. He doesn't feel comfortable commenting on a law that's in the process of being enacted. He only feels that he has the right to interpret a law after it's been enacted. And that's maybe a little bit farther to the one side than some judges would respond to that question, but I have to respect that opinion, and I think he's, in his own way, he's right in that regard. So he doesn't feel comfortable even commenting on this until it's passed.
Okay, but we could...
And then only in the context of interpreting it for a specific case.
But even if we tried it, and the judge didn't do it, we could come back and adjust it.
Oh, sure. I mean, yeah, the first case that comes before, and if he finds problems with it, he's going to let us know, and we can maybe adjust it accordingly if that's necessary.
We're trying to adjust it now so that it's good legislation going into place. I would rather have no legislation than bad legislation.
Oh, I agree, and I hope there's something that can work. There's no doubt about it. I thought of maybe if we sat down, or even if the attorney could write up a lease, which maybe it couldn't be. I'd rather pay my tax dollars to have the attorney write up a real ironclad lease and give it free to these landlords. Then there's no excuse. You know what I mean? Just, I'll pay, I'll pay them to do it. Just, I'll pay them to do it. Just give them these things so that they can get these people out, just on an eviction. We, by laws, are always trying to do a bad landlord's work, and it's really frustrating for the neighbors and for the aldermen.
Yes, it is.
I just... This really is near to dear to me, but it is frustrating. I understand it.
I'll tell you the easiest way out... Not to interrupt, but the easiest way out if you want to do a written lease, which probably isn't a bad idea, is to do a month-to-month lease. It's a... If it becomes a problem, you say, "Okay." At the end of this month, you're out. You give them a 30-day notice. And at the end of it, if you don't have these year-long leases, you can break it at the end of every month.
Right. I agree. I agree. It's got to be the landlord's job to do it.
Isn't that right, Jerry? I'm not going to put you on the spot, but although there's some... I've actually... I've got to add a caveat to that. I've had some argument from legal services that if you're on a month-to-month lease, they have some argument that it becomes a long-term lease, and I don't buy that. I don't think the judges do. But I've heard, encountered that. But in my mind, anybody that I've gotten out for reasons other than non-payment, the first thing you do is a 30-day notice. And after that, you can... If you're on an oral lease, you can do a 30-day notice with no reason whatsoever. At the end of the next 30 days from today, our lease is terminated. I don't have to give you a reason.
Which is perfect. Then we don't have to wait for two years because the trouble with this two years, and we all know it. The criminals are smarter than the other people, and they have two convictions, they're going to move. I want this to work. That's my biggest fear. They move, it starts all over, get another property, keeps moving it around. I think we've got to really stand out as people, as aldermen, and say, "We're not going to tolerate this from these landlords anymore." There are good landlords that do try to evict these people, and they run into trouble. But we've got to start embarrassing them. I always wanted to put the signs up. We've really got to make them come down to their level because you know it's just the bad landlord to do this.
I've actually been a big proponent of the signs. In fact, I brought it up the other night in a legislative committee about it, putting the slumlord signs in front of the properties. And there was a comment... There was a comment, though, that, "Well, that's not going to happen in Fulton." And, well, maybe...
Well, I think they should be embarrassed. Thank you.
It has worked in the city of Syracuse. I saw that. Kirsten.
How much percentage of landlords, former partners, we have a problem with? We've got Carol Rolles, who's got a fine job. Erie Street was what they called the slums years ago, and we've improved it tremendously.
Five percent, maybe, less.
Five percent, okay. And how much code enforcement do we have in this town? You say one, as much as we had years ago? Or do we have four times as much? What's the problem? Again, if we go back to... I'll tell you what the problem is.
Code enforcement. Really, even though you've got guys down there, they're probably not doing... My opinion... This is my opinion, okay? I don't think they're hitting the right properties, okay?
You've got different people. You know, I've been here 50 years. It'd be 50 years in December. You know, I've watched this town change a little bit. So I have a night change. Brad and I used to be good-looking. Brad still is, I'm not. We went to school together.
Correct you.
But, you know, it's changed. This town has changed. There's no question about it. But I don't think it's gone to the pits like we're all talking. Kathy was talking slumlords.
Why, wait! There are slumlords.
There are slumlords.
We have a slum situation here.
We have some that have numerous violations.
They're always the same...
Five percent of the people can be causing 90% of the problems.
Yeah. By business, we have something called a 90-10 rule, and that is you get 90% of your business from 10% of your clients, and it's the same thing.
If we weren't getting complaints, and Kathy knows, because she received it when she was older person.
And I inherited her problems, so...
That is... That's the problem. It's ongoing and ongoing.
We're ruining this town, right?
It's causing the problems. If they were to take care of their properties...
But they got more than one property. You're talking individuals that have multiple properties, and they have the same problem all over town.
Okay, well, again, we've got a code enforcement program that's got to be the best one. I mean, if we had Dan Vaughn...
If those... You know, if they were violating a code, we could do something about it.
We think they would be.
But these... What are happening, we have landlords that rent to tenants that do not care about anything. They do not care about their neighbors. They do not care about the law. They just don't care. Why? I really couldn't tell you.
Five percent is maybe the top of the list.
If some of that 5% is living next door to you, it is. That's where the problem is.
Good answer.
If code enforcement program should surround that house like they said before, and look for it.
Now, okay, they do look for violations, but, you know, here's one of the problems that I understand. One of the problem houses is up on South Third Street, right across the street from the church. I have been told that in the summertime, when they open some of the windows on the church, that they cannot have a service in there without hearing foul language coming from across the street. Now, nobody should have to put up with that. And if the landlord is willing to take the money from that type people, there's a problem with the landlord. We've got to get those people to obey the law or get out of our city because they're not welcome.
Questioning about it, isn't there something on the books? Should there be something on the books for a noise ordinance or a porch ordinance? I think the Swingle was trying to incorporate this. So our city doesn't look the way it is so we can control what is bothering us?
Yeah, Swingle just did enact a furniture ordinance on porches, yes.
Yeah, that's a... Second thing I just got, we are incorporating this plan here, is maybe a no-noise ordinance. One of the things that bothers us...
Well, the things that bother me are assault and related offenses, sex offenses, homicide, larceny, arson, robbery, forgery.
I thought, took care of that.
Is that what? They do. But after they go down, get their fingerprints, take their picture, and smile pretty, they go back home.
Yeah, the story's all over again.
You're just... You're just...
I know.
That's one of the problems, you know? Some people think that... And they just heard a big thing in Syracuse with that animal that first beat his wife with a ball bat and then was out on bail and went back into the hospital and poisoned her. Now, a court order... There was a court order of protection saying he wasn't to be there. And those court orders aren't worth the paper they're written on if a person wants to do something.
So this law will help us?
We want to get that type person that keeps violating the law and keeps making life miserable for his neighbors, make it very uncomfortable for him here, and have them leave or change their course of conduct.
Porch ordinance, noise ordinance, there's a direction I'd recommend.
Just, Jim.
Steve Chapel Island Street. This may not be perfect, but we've got to start someplace. I urge the council to pass it. It'll promote a better quality of life in the city of Fulton. Let's get started.
Nancy Cavalier, 6th ward. I just have a statement or a question to ask that Ron brought up about, that if they live, like, over by me and then they turn and move to live over by my front, they start all over again. I have a problem with that. They're just moving the problem from one side of the city to the other side of the city.
I could imagine if you lived in an apartment... Now, I'm not picking on any group here, but if you lived in a Nida Village and you did something wrong, you could move next door.
Yeah, that's what I have a problem with.
What's the difference?
You can't be three strikes and two years. It's got... You know, it's got to... You've got to make some... You know, it's got to be continual for our...
One of the things that we're trying to say is, instead of moving next door, before your neighbor moves next to me, I want the landlord next to me to call down to the city clerk's office, find out if this guy has been convicted of this, and then tell him not to rent to that kind of person.
But if he doesn't do that, then he starts all over again.
And the landlord who is knowing that this person's been convicted of this is asking for trouble.
And the other thing we're trying to get is landlords talk to each other. And one gentleman that was here last time, who was happy to... Said he would rather rent to... A bad tenant's better than no tenant, is what he said. He said that he doesn't... He won't tell another landlord. If somebody... Landlord calls and says, "You just had this guy here. How was he?" He won't tell him if he was bad. And if that's the way they talk to each other, then they got a problem. And it shouldn't be the city's problem.
Yeah, but still, then it's... I'm getting rid of my problem, and I made my neighborhood, and I'm giving it to somebody else. That doesn't make me feel good.
I know, but sooner or later, it's got to catch up.
Tom Kenyon, 4th street. Fourth and Worth, there's an apartment house next to me. This is just one of the things that happens with the code enforcement. October 15th, they sent him a notice of order. Violation: Yard has excessive trash, debris, garbage, and rubbish. Time to correct: five days. Another violation: Equipment materials are being stored in open areas of the premises. Time to correct: 10 days. Well, this was October 15th, and guess what? Everything's the same way as it was.
Well, usually, we follow up on them. If you looked at the agenda tonight, you see where we went, a couple places down to 6th Ward and took it away and charged him for it. And that's what should happen over there.
I'm just telling you, this is one instance.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that if it's followed up on, that don't happen.
If it's followed up on. What's the date today?
I don't know. I do it all the time. I have a stack of them every month, or we do at least three or four in each agenda.
What your paperwork doesn't show is if there has been follow-up action and...
There hasn't.
They've sent an accusatory to court. If it has been cleaned up and they've sent an accusatory to court, if it's just pending court action...
I understand.
Then the paperwork wouldn't catch up.
Yeah, and I don't think we do court action on the garbage and trash. If it's there, we send them a certified letter, and if it doesn't get cleaned up in a certain amount of time, we go and take it out and take it sus far. It doesn't have to go to court.
But that's under property conservation.
That's under property conservation.
Yeah. Trash is still...
The other problem...
Trash is under the charter.
The other problem with that particular individual's house is for each new charge, he has to be served separately. You know, he doesn't live in the town.
I know.
And that's, you know, it's...
But you know as well as I do, David, he spends more on lawyers than he does fixing the place up.
Yes.
Which is stupid.
If he pays them.
Yeah, he pays the lawyer, yeah.
The only thing is, the property conservation code is excluded from this now, right?
Gum with a banana, bro.
Right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So anyone else would like to speak on this matter?
I think you each received a letter from the Chamber of Commerce. And I think the letter from the Chamber, I think it's instructive. The Chamber certainly supports what the council's trying to do, certainly the intent of the legislation. I think one of the concerns with all the discussion here tonight has been about apartments and residential properties. But the way the ordinance is drafted, it would affect every piece of property in the city. And I think that either we need to make sure the business community and the industrial community is aware of this, or to do something different with the ordinance, or the next time we have a public hearing, make sure that they have an opportunity to be heard.
We've had a problem in the past with other... Like, when we were talking about the noise ordinance about notifying businesses, how we do that. Would the Chamber be willing if we sent a copy of this to them to put it in mailing?
Certainly.
But then that doesn't get all the businesses releasing it.
Well, I think it gets the majority, and I think, you know, not everybody's going to respond. And I don't really think the intent of what you're trying to do really is targeted at a business. But if businesses are going to be affected, they should be... I mean, if you read the ordinance, and I don't want to take it to its extreme, but it covers fraud. Now, theoretically, someone could be working inside a business, committing fraud, issuing bad checks. That's considered fraud.
Wouldn't that business terminate that employee?
Well, they... But they may not know about it. I mean, they may have nothing to do with the business.
But when it comes to their attention?
Well, they would, okay? But...
Done.
That... What I'm saying is the act, the conduct that violates the ordinance has nothing to do with the business.
Right. And I'm saying that if you terminate the employee...
But how would the business even know?
Because you'll be sent a notice. That's how...
We'll be sent... Yeah, but you won't be sent the notice until the third.
Right.
Okay, but...
Until you have 30 days to basically fire the employee.
Well, if you had an employee that was, for instance, doing some sort of fraud with bad checks, you, as an employee, would probably know when that person got arrested.
Well, they might get arrested outside the business. I don't want to belabor the point.
No, I understand what you're saying.
I'm saying is that the... I think we need to make sure that if we're going to affect businesses, that the possible violations have some effect on what's going on inside the building.
Well, yeah, and I think that's the intent. In fact, throughout the process, the businesses were potentially included, and there was one in particular that many, many illegal things, crimes have been committed, arrests have been made over the last year at this one particular place, which if this law had been in place, would be shut down right now. Obviously, if in a bank, if somebody's... An employee's doing something fraudulent or whatever, and the bank doesn't know about it, that's not considered really a...
I understand that, but if you read the literal interpretation of it. The other point I would make is, and I had a discussion with Dave about this before, it's in here that says mortgagees, which are basically banks, people who hold the mortgages, may be notified when it's come time to abate the nuisance. From a banker's standpoint, if we have a mortgage on a piece of property and the place is going to be evicted, or there's going to be an eviction, that obviously affects the value of the property and our ability to collect the payment. So I think the ordinance should either say the banks or mortgagees will be notified or they won't, by saying May, it's a gray area, and we need... A bank would need to know where they need to go with it. And there is some expense involved if you're going to notify the banks because you'd have to find out who was actually holding mortgages. But I just think the ordinance should be cleared up to say, "You either will or you won't notify them." I'm not sure it matters either way, but...
What kind of action would a bank take?
Well, we would... In our case, we would certainly... If we thought there was problems there, we have clauses under the mortgage where we could start some type of action ourselves, which may be quicker than the court system and...
Yeah, I think we should put that in.
No, I think I missed that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Anyone else?
I think I resolved this. Specifically, please.
I think we should definitely put that in here.
Mark Clark in Worth Street. I'm all in favor of what you're trying to do here, but I think we need to work on this code enforcement a little bit, too, because I think the guys down there are pretty relaxed. When you call them up and talk about a violation and you can't get anybody to do anything, I called my alderman. It takes a month before you get a...
If you have a problem with any city department not responding to your needs, would you please call my office? Because we're here to respond, and we're going to respond.
That's what I'm looking for.
That's... Please, let me know.
Well, this has been an ongoing problem at 402 Worth Street. You know, it started back when Kathy was on the council, and it's continuing today. And it's like, I can only do so much. You call me up, I process the work order, it goes downstairs, it sits down there for a while, then they go out and look at it. a while, then they go out and look at it, they give them two hundred and seventy-five days to correct something. And then, it's kind of ridiculous to, to give them two hundred and seventy-five days to correct something when it should be corrected in thirty days. And then they don't even go back after the period of time that has elapsed on the violation, they don't go back and check it. That's the problem downstairs.
That's what we're trying to say. I have no problem with John, he's worked for me fine. There's a problem somewhere in between that needs to be looked at.
My problem comes from...
We have to follow up on it too though ourselves, Jen. I mean, I do on mine.
Well, no, I have that. If I see something that don't get done, I go right down and say, "What takes you on that?"
No, I have that. But that's the problem. It goes downstairs and it sits.
Let's wrap your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak on this?
My name's Susan Alzano and I'm a homeowner and... And we didn't have one of the problems. Property was processed very well. Harley, the enforcement, the police department, Marth Spahn, everyone saw myself or one of my neighbors every single day for...
A long time.
This is the reason I'm here. You guys were through the clubs. They were sexually harassed. We couldn't open our front windows of our home. Between noise, men urinating, hunting, drinking beers, stumbling up and down the road, cars with no corners. Trash keeps coming out windows on the roof. It's not why we bought our house. It's not why we're staying here. We're staying there because we all think that you guys are going to get together and do something with...
The landlords.
The landlords. The landlord doesn't care, he is also a business owner in this game, which I find very pathetic. I come from a family with a lot of love, so I don't live in a mansion, I live in five-hundred block University. But we mow our lawn, we take our trash out, you know, we plant flowers, not everyone has the chance to plant flowers. It's fine. But we don't live like sloths. And just because someone is a tenant doesn't mean they have to live the way they do in our neighborhood. I am here representing an entire block, Uti to Street, of some of the people, I have owned our house for nine years, some of these people have lived there for thirty years and more. I just think, you know, you guys really need to get together. My children were embarrassed coming into our driveway and, and I was embarrassed when you hear a twelve-year-old say to their two girlfriends in the truck with you, "Oh, I'm so embarrassed." Please don't pay any attention to our neighbors. This is the first time they've been to your house. You know, we put up with five months of the worst summer of our entire lives. And yes, the landlord knew. He knew because I talked to him at eleven o'clock and I had on the telephone, but he didn't return any of my calls from nine to five.
Say, Sue.
He didn't care and it wasn't his problem.
That's right.
And it's his property, like, anyone that comes to my house, I am responsible for their actions. I'm sorry, this is responsible.
It is just the attitude that we have to change. That attitude is unacceptable.
I, Ms. Harley, I was going to make a sign on my own and post it in my front lawn with a great big arrow in the name of this person who owns the property. It's not, and you know, he owns a duplex, that's what I said. One side of his duplex that Sanchez could ever enter, they've been there four or five years. Great people. Everyone, when these other tenants moved in, everyone tried to hang their roof. I went and pounded on the door when a three-year-old was out on the roof, ready to die from the second story window. You know, we told them when garbage day was. We ended up with two stumps and a possum. You know, the police chasing the stumps around the front lawn, drinking bag of garbage at three o'clock in the morning. You name it, we went through it. And I was downstairs, I was with Harley, I was ripping Mark Spahn's head on fish holders and I was in the old one. Seven other neighbors were going to rent the house every single day, all because of one homeowner. So you guys, we need help.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Wendy Smith, Fourth Ward. First, I'd like to thank you guys for bringing this nuisance, nuisance abatement order to the table. I too, like Sue, have seen some of the ongoings of people in the city of Fulton and I for one, don't think that the citizens that uphold the law should have to accommodate the criminal activity of other people. I, one afternoon this summer, was bringing my girlfriend's two children home and I had my son in the car and we got out of the car to see the next door neighbor in broad daylight sitting there smoking joints, underage drinking and other marijuana activities going on. The cops had been notified and, and they can't catch them because the people have a scanner, they hear it come over the scanner because of a cordless phone or whatever, they know the cops are coming, they can clear everything out and don't get caught. And I don't, it's hard enough to raise a child in this day and age anymore without them being subjected to jerks that live like that. And I don't feel as a taxpayer or a homeowner that we should have to tolerate it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you going to, when we talked earlier about that relocating other tenants out of the building, you said you wouldn't, you would only close the premises that...
Only the nuisance, yeah. Whatever's considered the nuisance.
That, that's not in here. And that doesn't say that.
Of the way it defines premises, it does, sure.
Who would you be relocating?
Who would we be relocating?
Because it says we have to relocate.
It doesn't say we have to, it gives us, it gives us a remedy to recover the costs or actually put them against a property as a lien if they are incurred.
In relocating any occupants of the premises?
Right, talking about the section where we can go after the property and the cost, right?
Right.
It doesn't say we're going to, no, where I...
Sammy, the guy that is causing the problems, the landlord has to pay to find a new place to live?
That's not what that's saying.
Any occupants of the premises?
Which section are you reading, Ron?
Uh, just above sixty-three-ten.
That is, that is saying that the city can maintain a special proceeding to maintain, to, to get a civil penalty of five hundred dollars and any costing expenses against the property, including any for closing and relocating. It doesn't say we're going to relocate, but if in the event we had to, and the only time I think we would consider that is if it's a social services situation, then maybe that cost would be incurred. But it's not a situation where the city's going to make itself responsible for that through this legislation. And it's not saying the landlord has to pay for that.
Well, it's... So you're going to collect it from the landlord, the property owner?
I'm sorry, it does, it does. If, I thought you meant is the landlord liable in front to move the people? No, if, if we have to move people and pay to relocate them and, I can't think of a lot of examples of that, but social services was one instance. As far as between the city and the landlord responsible who didn't abate the nuisance, I would think that the landlord responsible should, should have to pay that, not the taxpayers.
In other words, he operates the law and now I gotta pay to move him?
You may.
That's what it says.
If you don't abate the nuisance, yes.
Or the court doesn't uphold to kick him out, I'm not abating the nuisance, so now I still gotta pay to move him. You gotta think about that. So the thing is, they were saying, well, somebody else on the ground about the three years, or three terms, two years, then you start over again.
Oh, you're wrong.
Yeah, you're beating yourself up a lot and you gotta tighten up somehow to do it. Otherwise, I could move back out of six-thirty-two, move him at six-thirty-two and have him another two years.
Why would you do that?
Well, apparently there's some way where you guys don't care.
That's right.
So they will do that. They will do it. They'll come in the other side, we upstairs, some of the downstairs. So maybe you should put it there that you can rent that for two years.
Yeah, but he's just put, he's just put that property in jeopardy.
That, so what? He's got two more years of money, but if he doesn't care now, he's not going to care at all. He won't care. So maybe you gotta put it there that you can't rent. I can't rent about two years. That's a violation if he rents. At least you've moved to another ward. You're not going to move him out of the city. Because there must be enough people that you're tired of, don't care.
Well, if he's willing to put that property in jeopardy, and then how does he know somewhere down the line, he doesn't rent to somebody else, that puts a third violation on him.
To be honest with you, well, let, let me clarify something. To be honest with you, if, that property on Utica Street, if the other half of the duplex was empty and this tenant decided to go from side A to side B, I would do exactly what I did before this came around and I called the CDA and I had their HUD subsidy revoked.
But what if they're not on HUD? What if they work for living?
Well, they were. That was an easy answer.
Yeah, if they work for living, they're not, they're not subsidized. What if they're just an alcoholic who raises ruckus all the time, stuff like that? They've had a good job.
Regardless, I still don't want them living next to me.
I agree with you. If you want this tight, you gotta tight, you gotta really tight it up because there's a lot of holes in there that can move right next door. I mean, I know you guys want these people...
You got any answers?
No.
I hear a lot of questions, no answers.
This is a public, you're supposed to give your questions so you can think about it, David.
I know, but we, but it's also time to get input and we appreciate some positive feedback.
I think you should put in it that the landlord is not allowed to rent that.
Well, we, we can't do that because we're not talking about specifically only landlord tenant properties, we're talking about all properties in the city.
Put it this way, Ron, if it's come to my attention, when I'm getting ready to prosecute one of these, if the landlord says, "I've evicted him" or "He's moved out," and I find out that he's just gone to another property that that landlord owns, I might still proceed. I don't know what I'd do. I, I think it'd be, it'd be quite a ludicrous action for the landlord to take to do that and I don't think you'd do that.
Well, no, I, I won't get this crap. But if there's people that you say are like this, they don't care, they have to, they will do it.
Eventually, it's going to catch up to them.
If the landlord has the money, they don't care what the property is.
If they do that, eventually, that's going to catch up to them because if they, say they move him into, from this apartment into this apartment, he's got two violations here, he still has them, okay, he's still got another, say he does in the first two years, he gets convictions, he's still got another year on this one and he moves another guy in there and in the meantime, he's moved this guy over to here and now he's doing the same thing over here and all of a sudden, he's got a couple convictions over here, now he's got doubled, he's got two properties in trouble now. I cannot imagine rationally why a businessman, I don't care who you are, doing that. It doesn't make sense to me. And that's an irrational individual and this is why we're trying to go after these people.
Well, let's take it one step further and that is if you move from side A to side B in a duplex, did you really abate the nuisance?
Yes.
I don't think so.
Yes.
A lady across the street wouldn't think so, would you?
It's at the address of the premises.
Yeah.
The address, if he lives at six-thirty-two, the premise is six-thirty-two, not at six-thirty-two-and-a-half.
Let me put it this way, in that scenario, I would continue with it and I, and then we leave it up to the man up there to decide, but again, I, I don't even think that, that the bad landlords would be, lack of a better way to say it, stupid enough to do it. I really don't. That's, that's just, that'd be just insane.
I think they would, as long as you're getting their money. Hi, you got a lot of places in the city of Fulton that aren't rented right now. You go around and look in the city and there's a ton of places that aren't rented and that's why they, they run into people a lot, in a lot of cases, because I think there's a lot of competition. So what I want to know is what are we going to do with public housing? If you read the newspaper, we shut Pathfinder Coast down every three days.
That's right. I haven't seen an article about that in a long time.
You probably haven't been looking. I've seen some. You could also do it, a lot of the taverns, we camp out policemen over in the parking lots, some of the local bars. They get eight, ten, flipping container violations a week.
The police department.
The police department. Police department. Well, I'm sure that some of these, these apartment owners are going to start watching the papers to see who is getting prosecuted and who isn't.
I would suspect that the way this would happen procedurally, Ron, isn't going to be that somebody, myself or somebody's going to sit there and put a notch on a belt somewhere and say, "Okay, we got two in this house." It's going to be a situation where, when we know that there's a house that people have been complaining about, we're going to look and see if it's been criminal arrest and convictions. I think it's going to work backwards like that.
All right, then, I still think it's imperative that it goes back to the point, I mean, I want to know from the police, if somebody's convicted, I want to know the first strike. I don't want to know the second or third strike, I want to know the first strike. Because with this lack, lack of knowledge not being a defense, I want to have the knowledge. So I want to know the first offense.
Would you act on that knowledge?
I act on a lot less.
I mean, if, if you're told that your tenant's just been convicted for assault occurring within that premises, are you going to evict him on the first one?
Yes. David, I had to make somebody move because somebody else was coming to try to fight.
To fight with them?
It wasn't them, they were very nice people. I said, "I can't have them leave." And they were, wow. I felt terrible about it, but I didn't feel I had a choice. Another reason I was scared was because the police were there, three, four times domestically to screen outdoors. I never knew about it, only was arrested, one of the neighbors called me. So I evicted them. Spencer told me. And that's why your nuisance is retarded. Very hard. So you're going to make that fine, you've got to, you're going to play. You can't let them lose their job, you can't let them rent with the same landlord. You gotta, you gotta do that some, I mean, otherwise, if these guys are as bad as you say they are, and all they care is having somebody in there and getting their three hundred dollars and...
What I, what I really see here...
They're not going to care. If they got two years, they got two years of money, it's three offenses. I got thirty days to move to the next door, I got another two years.
I would, I would offer or ask that we consider amending this further in section sixty-three-dash-five-two, where it says provide thirty days for elimination of the nuisance. Add a clause that states that moving the nuisance to another premises owned by the same party does not constitute elimination.
Yes.
Okay.
No technicalities.
And also, I'm sorry, the form of the first violation.
I don't have a problem with that. That, that I think is a good idea. I think that's a good idea.
A lot of times, it's actually, you don't get along, you don't...
I also think that the, the, the bank, the, whoever holds the lien on the property should also be notified because they may, they may want to move on that too. The bank may want to do something about it.
Let me, I mean, Jerry mentioned costs, just so you know, if a case comes to me and I see, if, if our law says we will notify the Morye G, somebody's got to pay about three hundred bucks to get an ab, well, okay, we can just get a stub search, but it's usually a hundred dollars just to find out from an abstract company if there's a lien on the property. Now, that's a cost that may be recoverable through that, but you just have to be aware that...
But it might not be recoverable, right?
It may not be, yeah.
Thirty days, that means a beta, that's a first offense.
Or if we find out there's no lien on it, we still have to pay somebody to search that, so. And, and the other, and when you're also talking about costs, Mark, the notifying, I mean, if, if you want to get into having to notify every time there's one conviction, that's something that we should probably look at.
I would say, I would, I would say you wouldn't notify the bank till probably after a second conviction.
But as far as notifying a property owner, if there's one conviction occurring at the property, that opens a whole can of worms financially, who's going to do it? How's it going to, how's it going to be done? I don't think we can just add that sentence in here and leave it there.
Well, you gotta take all that information, that's not fair, we got to notify, it's possible, it's possible.
It's like an analogy, it was in reference to the law, so like analogy, just law and kind of the best.
Can't take a contravention, do someone's name in the paper or head for somebody next door to call and say...
That's true.
Dave, doesn't, doesn't, I think, I think if it gets this bad, I think you'd be very hard pressed not to know about it.
That's possible, but this law, if you make a lot of exposure to this council, that would be difficult. If you got, you should make a social fair for that one law. If somebody's got it in for somebody else, maybe, tell me you have three charges, quickly, find new charges that would not go against anybody else and then they don't inform, now suddenly, that person's in trouble. But if you make it in there, so you do notify my first offense, then you've got time.
You know, unless you think the court system is crooked and after you as well, as well as the city council, I think it'd be kind of difficult to dummy up some stupid charges. I mean, it looks to me like you have to be convicted in a court of law where the judge will find you guilty beyond a reasonable doubt that you did it. And if you're going to go with that assumption, then it sounds like you have contempt for the whole system.
In the court, sentence the person for whatever they can't blame on. Now you're trying to make a nuisance collect a sentence. All it takes is a lot of handling, but you gotta send away. But you said, someone's got to keep track of this, you're saying not, not in a belt, somebody in the state's got to keep track of this somehow. If you're going to wait till there's a lot of problems and then find out, yeah, they had three convictions in the last eighteen months, that's not fair to anybody.
Well, let me turn it around, Ron. The reason I think procedurally, at least the way I would handle it, is to wait till there are complaints is because, yeah, maybe by definition, if somebody assaults their wife or their spouse three times in two years and gets convicted of it, maybe by definition it fits under this, but if the neighbors don't know about it, it's probably not a nuisance. Whereas, there's three discounts out front because a civic gentleman is harassing the neighbor's twelve-year-old daughter, we're going to hear about that and that's a nuisance. So those we're going to be keeping track of. For, for this, for a system to be developed where somebody in the city government has to keep track of every single conviction in the city and start notifying lay-in owners, it's, it'd be absolutely, totally overburdened, so...
I agree. Why? Any law, it's... It's wrong.
It is.
So, is the answer likely to press a dispute?
No.
You know, one has to ask the question, outside the house, or inside the house?
Well, if, if, if it's going on and it's not creating problems for the neighbors, then it's not necessarily a nuisance. You, you see how, that viewpoint is, if it's not bothering people, those aren't, those aren't the problems.
It's a nuisance, like always knows.
It's not a nuisance to bother somebody, really, you know. Yes, sir.
You threw me out a long time ago.
Definitely.
Is it a fair statement to say that what the council was looking to do here is to force landlords not to rent to troublemakers? If landlord A has a bad tenant and that tenant goes to landlord B, you really don't want landlord B to rent to that. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you, if a landlord has a bad tenant, we don't want him handing it off to another landlord in the city, we'd like him handing it off to another area.
Allows landlord B to rent from that person. And I think that what you're trying to do is to do one of two things here. One, you want tenants or people in general to be good citizens and you want landlords to not rent to troublemakers. And that's, that's a good goal, but I think that this law is not the best way to solve that problem because you get into a lot of technical issues where the wording is all, allows you more flexibility than you really want to have and so you have to rely upon a personal judgment to not do what the law's words would allow them to do. And so, I think that the problem that we have here is that, yeah, there are generally three areas. I mean, there, there are areas of people's conduct where the free to do what they choose. And then on the other end of the spectrum, there are areas that are clearly regulatable. And our society has an area in between that requires unlegislated virtue, that people have, that, that society functions because they just do the right thing even though it isn't legislated. What you have is when you have a general decline in candidacy, a general decline in civic virtue, that middle area now becomes empty. So the question is who grabs it? If the people with license grab it, then you get a lot of people doing irresponsible things. If the government grabs it, you get the government regulating in more areas than they should. Both are really not very good solutions. I think that there are two proposals that I... I think that there are two proposals that I have. One, that the council can actually do, one that the council couldn't do, but the community in general could. It's possible, if the council is interested in converting the character of some of these areas from multi-family dwellings to single-family dwellings, because there's a, there are a lot of empty apartments, so we don't need multi-family apartments. And if the council finds that to be true, then possibly what we could work out with an agency such as the Community Development Agency, be programmed to work hand-in-hand with the programs that already exist, to help out. As an example, buyer wants to buy a three-family house, he wants to use it for his single-family house. He can't afford to buy it and then pay the cost of renovation to single-family. So if the council wants to, they could look into the possibility of having a program that would assist the buyer in the purchase, and where there would be an obligation, a construction loan-type contract, construction loan-type mortgage, that would finance the renovation to a single-family house. Now, that would change the character of the multi-family area to a single-family area, if that is something that the council finds it wants to do. That's the carrot approach to this. You don't, you're not dealing with people's behavior, but you're providing an economic carrot, just as you provided an economic carrot to have multi-family houses at one time. The second thing that I think that everybody's talking about here is the character of people, the character of citizens, the character of landlords, the character of tenants, the character of owners in general. Problem there is that it's very difficult to, again, legislate in this middle ground. And this is a, again, this is the solution that the common council can't do, but what we're really talking about doing is changing people's souls. Now, this community, the Fulton community, the greater Fulton community, can do that. We, as individual people, can get together and we can look into ways that, what can we do to improve the spiritual quality of the people of the city, of the people in the area? We can make ourselves a better community. Now, I'm thinking that's long-term, but I think that it's, I think it's a fair statement to say that, you know, I think that it's somewhat of a spiritually dry area, and I think it could stand some improvement. And the, it's a long-term approach. It doesn't solve any of the political problem that the council has when somebody has an immediate disturbance in that neighborhood, but it's a, it's a long-term solution that, you know, that I would challenge all of the individuals who are leaders in this community to check into. And that, again, the council shouldn't get into that, it's not their province, but I think that that's what, you know, if we really want people to behave well, then we have to deal with their souls, because that will change their behavior. The way people act is a product of their soul. So I, but I think that possibly if we could avoid some of the problems that are going to occur with this type of regulation that we, you know, that has a lot of technical problems to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It says that they have to be convicted, there has to be a conviction. Well, say like the house next door to me, the police are there every other day, whether it's for noise, this, that, nobody's arrested, there's no conviction, how do you take care of that?
It stays the same as it was, unless you got three convictions.
You just hope that the cops are there enough times that they can find something convictable three times in two years.
And then the next day she has the charges dropped, and then there's no conviction.
That's a good point.
But it's still a nuisance.
Yes, it is.
We can only go so far.
But because there's no conviction, no charges or anything, then it doesn't count as a strike or anything.
When this...
That's correct.
Yeah, it's serious, you've got to make changes.
When this was first...
There is nuisance, there is no conviction.
This ordinance isn't going to fix everything, unfortunately. I'd like to be able to improve the condition in our city, but is it going to be a fix-all? By no means.
Yeah, it's a nuisance, but they know how far to push the law. You know, the cops come, all of them, you date of birth, okay, and, you know, and they turn around late, but it's still a nuisance.
Yes, it is.
You know, they're there every other day.
Because we, when we first started talking about this, one problem we identified was in places that have code enforcement there all the time, police there all the time, fire department there a lot, and it's not only a nuisance to the neighbors, it's also significant costs to the city, but in drafting this, we really couldn't, you can't really hammer on the property because the police are called.
But one of the things we did talk about, though, is if there is a case where charges are always brought but never pursued, and some of the charges are where the city has the option to pursue, and the city may think twice about, gee, do we want to discharge this? Maybe we do want to peg this person because of this long list of charges that are always brought and dropped, brought and dropped, maybe the city would be less likely to drop charges in order to get three convictions.
In most cases, I can assure you that the city does not drop charges. It is the individual, when the individual is placing charges against someone, usually in a domestic-type situation is where that happens. If a police officer is the one that signs the accusatory, it will not be dropped. Just grip it.
Well, I think that before we rework in this, I know it's been a lot of work since the last time we met, and just as a point of information, tonight I heard premises defined in two different ways, so maybe you'd want to consider how they, what it really means, I'm not sure anymore.
Could you tell me what you mean by that? I thought I read right.
Well, I heard, I heard you say you would go after a particular place where a person lived, in other words, not all the apartments, but the one, and then I heard Mr. Thompson say, "Well, no, we're going to go after the whole thing because we don't want to move next door." So, there's a contradiction there, and maybe, I don't know if that needs to be fine.
That's what I said.
That's not what I said, but my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, but my opinion would be if the person moved from side A to side B in a duplex, I don't feel the property owner as a bait of the nuisance.
Different definition than just the apartment they're in.
Premises is defined, I'll read it again.
No, 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 I read...
No, let me just, because you're raising this, I want to make sure everybody's clear. Premises shall mean the building, place, or real property where on the public nuisance is being conducted or exists. In my mind, that would be confined to one apartment, however, it can mean a whole building, but if the rest of the building, say there's four apartments, if the rest of the building isn't a nuisance, I don't consider that. But if one's vacant and the nuisance moves into the vacant, just moves across the hall to the vacancy, I'm going to consider that to still be a part of the premises.
Okay, so it's really about the nuisance, the part of the apartment, okay, that's where I want you to get it, and what are we talking, what if we're talking about premises?
I just want to make sure you're clear.
So it really is about the person, and here we talk a lot about property, I don't know if we can say person. What person is...
Nuisance. I mean, I guess... Nuisance is, I can't even think of what it wouldn't necessarily, what it wouldn't be to a person, but it also can be a group of people.
A group of people, an animal, you know, person. And the second thing that I just wanted to mention is, is my belief, and I could be wrong on that, it's really more of a question, if a person is found mentally incompetent by the judge, is brought in for a problem, and they're a nuisance to the neighborhood, then they probably are never going to see a conviction.
So if they're mentally competent under, what, under criminal law, well, if they're found not competent, stay in trial, they can never be convicted, that's correct, until they are found competent.
Okay.
So that would apply, and they wouldn't fit under...
Okay, my area, I think I expressed that I have a person like that living near me that is definitely a nuisance, a danger to themselves most of the time, and no one seems to do anything. So I would just ask that as you continue to work through this, that would be an area where we think about what we might do to help people who are not competent, at post-damage to themselves, as well as a nuisance to their neighborhood.
Is that person under anyone's care?
I don't know. Hopefully that will change, but I'm told it's very hard to do.
Just living alone?
Yes.
An adult? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I just want, you know, the one thing that I heard in, this law does have some problems, and I know it's not going to solve all the problems, but I hope the council will consider going that one step further, or discussing about all the problems, nuisance problems, this is the fundamental question, like the immediate problems, if there are no convictions, which a lot of the types of police, community-based police, they just come over and say, "Please turn down the music," and sometimes it happens, if they do, a lot of, a lot of the criminals will escape and by moving to another apartment city, no matter what you say in here, they will move it, and it will never be a problem, they'll never be caught. I just hope we can start really sending the message out that the 1% of the landlords, we're talking about a very complicated law, 1%, and I think there's another way, I don't have all the answers, and I tried for years, and I know you guys have difficulty finding it, but maybe if we can get some of the good landlords, and you have a committee, a real good committee, to talk about some of these problems, some of the neighbors that experienced it, some of the landlords can feel some of this. I don't see why eventually we can't go to shaming these 1% instead of having laws like this really shaming these people, because you know that these people will rent to each other, the bad landlords will, will get the other ones, because the landlord did say it, it's all about money.
Talking about shaming, actually...
We had talked on Eureka Street about going to the business that is owned by the person that owns the house next to her, and a few people on the block are going to walk around with picket signs.
Oh, I think that's...
Saying this guy, well, I won't say it.
You see what I mean, every small percentage, we all, in the name of, every one of us know the slum lords of this city, I think there's a faster way, a quicker way to get to them without putting complicated laws in the law.
One other answer, yeah, that maybe this isn't, doesn't go too far, but it goes a little way, is the deterrent factor. I mean, yeah, maybe, maybe my tenants get called by, the police get called all the time, but nobody ever gets arrested, but now that this law's on the books, I'm going to think a little bit and say, well, maybe, it may make somebody think a little harder.
Yeah, I don't even mind at this point, but I just maybe go one step further, maybe the city can't get brave enough, and I know it's a hard thing to do to start these trials.
We are hoping that this is going to have a deterrence factor. It may not, well, you know, then we've got to do something else.
Actually, one of the feature articles in this month's Nikon magazine was the signs in Syracuse about this property is owned by a slum lord, this is his name, this is his address, this is his phone number. Yeah?
Oh, God bless him, I think it's, I really think it's some...
It's a bad idea.
Well, actually, they had an article in the USA Today, probably, well, when Syracuse first came out with that, they actually had a, I've got a photo, I've still got the article, they had a photograph of the sign in there and all the information that was on it, and I thought, you know, that's probably not a bad idea.
Because the tenants wouldn't be there, it's a landlord, it's a landlord's private property, I don't allow drugs on my property, I don't allow that, the simplest problem is, they shouldn't allow that. The renters have a choice to rent, so most judges would say, yes, you had the choice to sign this lease, you promised to obey the law, and you, as the owner, didn't have to let them out your property, so let's start embarrassing them. I'd picket the business, I'd put a sign in front of their house, I'd walk around their house, the few, in the very few, that's what we've got to focus on, we've got to embarrass all the city of Fulton. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thirty-one else? Anyone on the council?
No.
We're going to have to draft this.
We're going to have to update the information we're submitting about this, and we're going to have to schedule a public hearing.
Well, probably could do it by the next meeting. I'd like to make a motion that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing.
Let me first, what's... Public hearing?
Go ahead.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed.
November 17th. To advertise for the next public hearing.
Okay, we have that. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We will have another public hearing on this, on a revised, and we will make sure that the revised copy is available a minimum of five days prior to the meeting. Next item.
To tell the mayor be authorized directive signed agreement between the city of Holden County, the Swigle for providing services awaits and measures that cost $6,000 per year effective January 1st, 1999 through December 31st, 2000.
I'll move it. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolving, so into section 177-25-F5 of the City of Holden zoning ordinance, common council hereby approves the placement of four incidental signs in the city right-of-way adjacent to the Seal Right campus. One sign to be located on southeast corner of State Street and South First Street. One sign to be located on northeast corner of Division Street and South First. One sign to be located on the east side of South First Street between Division and State. One sign to be located on north side of Division Street between South Second Street and South First Street.
From what I was told from Steve Run, these signs are going to be informational signs to direct the truck traffic to the correct area at Seal Right, because they're having trouble with some of the truckers coming into town and not knowing where to go.
Not knowing where they're going.
So these are not advertising signs, these are informational signs to...
Mayor, to be honest with you, the sign ordinance under section 177-25 does not differentiate between an advertising or a directional sign, it says sign.
Okay.
And I know that everybody who's come before this council this year has been treated the same way, and that is being sent to the planning commission for recommendation, come back to the council for a public hearing. I think we all got some papers just last week about being arbitrary and capricious, and I think we should be careful.
I would agree with that.
Control devices accepted by sign orders?
If they are publicly owned and for public use, I mean, that's what it says. I've got to hear.
They're accepted or they're not accepted?
They are accepted, if they're public signs erected by or on behalf of a governmental body to post legal notices.
In other words, they don't have to go through the same process?
Right.
So this is okay?
No, it's my understanding that Seal Right is going to own the sign and put it up, and which is different than the city, it's like, this basically says if the city wants to put up a stop sign, or put up a sign that says traffic that way. It's a lot different than a company. I just think we should be careful, that's all.
So you are suggesting that we send this to the planning commission?
My opinion is, since these are directional signs, they're not an advertising sign, I'd like to get it passed, because I'd like, I, we got a problem with these trucks up and down First Street, too, and I'd like to, hopefully this will alleviate some of that problem.
Is that a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we pass it tonight.
All right, we have a motion on this resolution. Do we have a second?
I have a second, yeah.
We now have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I oppose it, too.
Opposing.
It is a tie.
Yeah.
I am in favor. Next item is the discussion on streetlights in the Grand Park.
Yeah. Well, we, last year, or about, just about a year and a half ago, we turned the lights off down there, and we stopped, in other words, we're encouraging people to go home like it's dark down there, mainly because...
Playing basketball till 2:00 in the morning, weren't they?
Well, not only that, quite a few years ago, they had an attendant down there that took care of the tennis courts, and the, and the city got rid of the attendant, so it doesn't get locked anymore, and what happens, we have people there till 3, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning sometimes. So, what the thought was, unless you wanted to go the expense of hiring an attendant, yeah, turn the lights off. We did, and we really haven't had a problem. I've had some complaints about it last year, but, I mean, we had some discussion, and it costs about $5,000 a year to light that for a few months a year, for a few hours for the most it can pay is eight people. And we just didn't feel it was fair to, you know, we did tell a group if they wanted to pay that cost, we didn't mind. The problem is, the biggest cost of it was the poles and stuff, so I'd like to, now that we've let it go for this long, and judge the impact, we also moved some, had an eye on, moved some lighting from another area... from another area into that intersection, because, you know, they used to light that intersection up, and the kids, a lot of kids in that area and stuff. So that solved that problem. So I'd like a motion to have them removed, and the fixtures.
Now, I have, I've been advised that Niagara Mohawk is, in discussion, has, has said that if they remove these, and at some other time we develop that area, that it would be financially beneficial to the city to-
Put their own in.
Place their own poles in there, instead of renting the poles.
But what we tried to do is we, we negotiated with NIMH to try to get them, let's put a timer on the poles, and they wouldn't do it. They said, no, we can't do that. And then I felt that because the poles have been in so long, we should own them. We paid $4,500 a year for them for the last umpteen years, you know, I'm, I'm almost going to pull a cost. But they said, yeah, you can have them for $16,000. So I say we take them out and let it go at that.
We have a resolution, a Joe Durett resolution.
Resolve that Niagara Mohawk be authorized to remove eight 400 watt high-pressure sodium lamps, luminaires, aluminum poles, concrete foundations, and circuits. Said removal would result in approximate savings of $4,518.25 per year.
I'm over.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Does anyone in the audience have any other business to bring forward to council?
Mr. Scott. Mayor, Mr. Scott does.
Mr. Scott.
About 15, 18 months ago, I talked to the other administrators, and, with the assistance of about people that are on social security disability, about this land tax law, and they were working at it then. About a little over a year ago, I talked with Mrs. Sullivan's office, not her personally. Said they sent papers to the administration for them to pass any resolution they want to work on. I waited, two months ago, I talked with Mrs. Moore downstairs. She claimed she sent it up a year ago, and said table it till this call. It was tabled, I talked with some people just two months ago, and they were going to table it, not the first, meaning second, postponed. And now it's two months, and it's not going on, I just wanted to-
That has been forwarded to legislative committee to, uh, review and make a recommendation to council. So they do have that.
I mean, that's supposed to be two weeks ago, final notice, and I've heard it here.
Yeah, we talked about it, and we talked, Mike and I talked.
It is not, the legislative committee has been dealing with a number of different pieces of legislation. It's nuisance payment being one of them, and it's taken a long time. That shouldn't take a long time to do, that because it is a shorter resolution.
We've already seen it twice. You've already seen it once or twice.
It is, anyone else? Anyone on the council?
Yeah, I've got it.
I had, I had somebody ask me about Christmas lights.
Yeah.
When, when does that go off?
That was supposed to be on the agenda for discussion today. I just want to know, we want to make sure it's up for, before Thanksgiving shopping week. And we usually take it down there as soon as we can after January 1st.
Okay. We're going to have a little- We're going to have a little bit of a problem downtown.
I know.
Because we just found out today that probably the streetlights for the downtown project will not be here until possibly the first week of December. Because the poles haven't been manufactured yet.
Oh, I just had to, you know, we got a, there's a map made up, and Joe's got it, and we just had to get him to-
Do we, we have a contract for that, right?
Yes, we do.
We've got a three-year contract.
And the, the date is in the contract of when they put it up?
No, there's no specific date as to when they put them up. We tell them when to put them on, when to take them down, but we only get them up two weeks, because it costs more. We will, but-
Who is to notify them as to when we want them?
Joe?
The city clerk.
That's what I was waiting for you to say.
I can, I can walk around with Kathy and-
This is real, that's crazy, Liz. I sent out the information on the area, I think I can call on it, just to clarify. You can change them, it's not in the contract, we have a configuration that they screwed up last year. It's supposed to correct it this year. And you guys can change it any way you want, because it was set up in a way to come out of the end.
Right.
Very nice. You can take them right out of First Street, put up a big Christmas tree and spread them out more. But I just want to remind the council that before, we were leasing also the boxes that they were plugged into. We changed that last year because we were paying a lot of money every year. We purchased them, that was all paid for, there should be no more cost to them.
Yeah, we were leasing them from NIMH, weren't we?
We were, we were leasing them many, many years, we didn't know about it.
We have those now?
We, we bought them down, but they're all taking care of it.
Okay. Very good.
You can configure them any way you want, and all those pull on each one's for months in general.
I figured you, they're usually, the business people usually like them up for that dead-long shopping weekend, you know, Thanksgiving weekend.
They should go up just before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, just before then, and, but we need to give them some noise, because everybody wants them up then, you know.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody else?
Wait, I know, I had a couple of things. I wanted, I was told I had to bring it up to council meeting. I'd like to have a traffic study done for the no parking sign removal on Park Street between Division and Pratt. Those signs were put up there before when Misha had limited parking, but now that they've expanded their parking lot down there, the neighbors have called, and they feel that there's no longer a need for the, the no parking signs down in that area.
On Park Street?
On Park Street.
Between?
Between Division and State.
Division and State, on which side of the street?
It is on the east side.
East side of the street?
Yeah.
And that is a resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The only other thing is that I got to talk to the clerk about, I got potholes, it's November, and we don't, I got potholes on South First Street, somewhere between Broadway and Division Street. They may be nailed up.
We'll get that thing carried. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Being adjourned.